Before we get into this evening's meeting, there has been advertised a public hearing, and the purpose of the public hearing regards our cable franchise renewal for the city of Latrobe. The hearing this evening is held pursuant to Section 626 of the Federal Cable Act, which sets forth the process for franchise renewal. Our current franchise agreement with Comcast will expire on February 11, 2014, and we're in the process of seeking to renew that franchise. This public hearing is an important part of the franchise renewal, in which the city seeks public comment on the cable operator's past performance and our community's future cable-related needs. The purpose of the hearing is to hear from citizens regarding the past performance and future needs, as I just indicated. Franchise renewal is the best opportunity for a municipality to assert its rights with regard to its cable operator and to obtain important benefits in return for granting the cable operator the right to use its public rights of way. These benefits included are not limited to strong and enforceable customer service standards, the state of our cable system, protections of our rights of way, franchise fees for the cable operator's use of the rights of way, reporting requirements, legal protections for the city, and better mechanisms to enforce the franchise agreement. These are just some of the potential benefits available through franchise renewal. Anyone here this evening who wishes to offer comment regarding the forthcoming renewal of our cable-TV franchise agreement, we would ask that you kindly step forward to the microphone. Please give your name and address and whatever comments you may wish to offer. Wow, everybody must be happy as pie.
My name is Casey Stubbs. I have an office in the Quaterini Building on the fourth floor, 816 Ligonier Street. Is your agreement with Comcast, are you only allowed to be with Comcast or is there other providers allowed in the city?
No, it's not a mutually exclusive contract. In other words, other cable operators could come into the city at the same time.
So then is it just with the city's business with Comcast? Is that what you're asking comments about?
Basically, we're asking for those who've had Comcast service for the last, I'm trying to think, 10 years. How do you feel about it?
Well, I moved into the office, I set up to get into the office in February, mid-February, around February 15th, and I actually was not able to get into the office until April 4th. And that was because they were not able to install the cable. They made multiple excuses as to why they couldn't get it in the building. The building didn't have the right set up, the building was older. Even though there were other people that had cable in the building, for some reason, they couldn't get it to me. After calling several times to managers and different people, they just couldn't seem to get it done. Even the owner of the building, Mr. Quaterini, called them and asked them to speed up the service, and they could not make it on time. Therefore, I was not able to move into the office for about a month and a half. Besides that, the service is pretty good. It's good quality service, but the customer service with that interaction was very poor.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Not only the past performance, but future cable needs? Anybody have any comments?
Madam Mayor, and Mr. Solicitor, may the council persons make comment?
You are a citizen of the community.
Thank you. The first question I would have is on the transfer assignment or change in control, which is 9.8 of the contract. And it has a provision, which I'm not particularly fond of, but they have to get permission of the city in order to make any transfer or assignment. But the little last clause is one that I don't particularly care for. Provided that such consent shall not be unreasonably withheld. And that's on page 1232. What does that mean? What would be an example of unreasonably withholding consent?
If you're asking me, Mr. Jim, I think reasonableness is up to the individual. But the bottom line is, if there are transfers, I would think, and it's only my opinion, that there would have to be some logical basis why we would not be willing to give a consent to a transfer. As you may recall, Highland Video transferred to Comcast a number of years ago. And we went through that procedure, and we're asked to give our consent, and we did. Obviously, if it would cause harm to the city, then I would think that that would not be reasonable for us to assent to a transfer. But it's hard to say what is reasonable, what is not, until you are in that circumstance.
Why do we have it in there?
There was a provision that was negotiated during the last contract. That was one of the things that was insisted upon. I don't know how else to say it. And then, given today's climate, this business is buying another business.
Would we be able to lower the rates for our citizens? One of the complaints, I think, is, for instance, is HBO is sort of a free channel of some sort, and then about three or four years ago, it suddenly became part of a package, and you had to buy the entire package in order to get HBO. I think that was one of the things that occurred. And what if we wanted to object to that? I'm just trying to clarify what that means. I'm not sure that you gave me a good explanation. You say it's reasonable if it's reasonable.
Well, it's just hard until you know a given set of facts. It's difficult to say whether our assent or non-assent would in fact be reasonable. And I don't know how else to answer it.
Can you give me an example of an unreasonable request?
Oh, and I can't.
That's all, Mr. Counsel.
You're requesting that is unreasonable, Richard.
I understand. It just seems that some of the contracts lean very heavily in favor of the vendor, that's all. And that is an example of it.
Are there any other comments from anybody regarding the public hearing? Madam Mayor, hearing none. We declare the public hearing to be closed.
Call order, please stand for the question. Mr. Jim, Angela?
Here.
Mr. Jim?
Here.
Mrs. Wolford? Mr. Scopora?
Here.
Mr. Boldnary?
Here.
Mr. Forish?
Here.
Madam Griffin?
Present.
Six present. May I have a motion for approval in this from April 12, 2013 meeting, please?
Madam Mayor, I move that minutes of the August 12, 2013 meeting be approved and accepted, and be permitted to remain on the secretary's desk, where they will be available for reading and inspection to anyone.
May I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. May I have approval of fiscal department reports and pay bills from March of August 213? May I have a motion, please?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
May I have a second?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Michael. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now we have time for citizens' requests and comments. If you have anything you wish to say, you just go to the mic and state your name and your address, please. Anybody? All right, community reports? More authority, Zoe, and you have a call?
I'd like to report on the demolition Truman and Main. That demolition's finished. I'm waiting for Phil to come in this week for that, and then we're going to start 901 Ligonier Thursday.
Community reports? Chief Bumgarth?
Nothing, Madam Mayor.
Chief for Zoe?
Just like to clarify a statement that was in the TRIB about a week ago. The investigation for the artisans, and there are six that are still under investigation. People probably don't realize that, but there are six, six fires that are unsolved within the city. And that goes back to the St. Vincent de Paul Fire, the All-American Grill, Playland, 342 Thompson, and Truman Avenue Fire, and the Grubman Pop Fire. The state police are done with their investigation. So I will tell you, when Seth Hillman, the trooper that was investigating with me, I called him, I said, "Are you still investigating?" And he says, he laughed, he says, "No, I read that in the paper." He said, "John, I told you my portion's done." I'm here to let you people of the community know that the fires are still under investigation, and they are by another outside agency. And I can't reveal that at this time. But they are still under investigation, and they still are ongoing. But it is not by the state police. So please, if you don't have the correct or accurate information, don't talk to the media. Because I have to go back, and I have to explain to people. So whoever printed it, retract it, and that's all I can tell you. So, other than that, thank you.
Chief Joe, motion?
Latrobe's 2013 paving program will begin at the end of this month. I just received some info today that it will be September 30th, and we will be starting on Josephine Street. What we did up there is, the city engineers, myself, and the contractor, we got together and kept walking that street and walking that street. And we come up with eight catch basins that we're going to put in there to alleviate several years of water problems and road problems. So we're going to start there on the 30th. It's going to take about a week to do all the basins and the pipes, and then probably about a half a week to pave them. After that, we're going to head in the first ward area. And I'm very happy, once again, the on-again, off-again, on-again, the CDBG paving program this year. I'm really excited about the fact that they found some extra funding, and they included Latrobe back on. So at the beginning of October, we'll be heading in the first ward area to do five streets. Also, the flooding on August 28th. There was just water problems all over the city of Latrobe. The police, the fire, the public works. I believe everybody worked well together. And for the most part, we have all the damage corrected. And we've identified some problems that in the future here, we're going to be trying to make some corrections. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, before we proceed into the action items, I would ask council's pleasure in amending the agenda you should have received in your packet by today, a resolution entitled approving WPPSEF Energy Audit Grant Agreement with Southern Allegheny's Planning and Development Commission. There is, the city manager can address this if there are any questions, but there is an energy audit proposed of our building here, which I believe will run around this.
It's completed?
No, it's completed. It's already completed, paid for. And we're now seeking reimbursement for a significant portion of that payment in the amount of $5,000, up to $5,000 grant. So I'm going to ask council if you'd be kind enough to make a motion to amend the agenda to put this item on.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Scopora, second?
I second, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Boldnary, all in favor of remanding the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried.
I will add that as item seven under Administration and Finance. Having done that, Madam Mayor, members of council, under Finance or Administration and Finance Department, the first item is an ordinance. And I'll just read the caption. It's an ordinance of the city of Latrobe relative to the establishing, maintenance of the city employees' pension, annuity, insurance, and benefit fund or funds to met certain provisions of the pension plan or program applicable to the police of the city of Latrobe, and to restate in its entirety such pension plan or program. And the purpose of this ordinance is basically twofold. You will recall there was a kill-in-action provision, which for a period of time, the local municipalities funded through insurance. There was a benefit provided. The state, a good while ago, has determined that it will take over the funding of the kill-in-action benefits, so that there was no longer any need for local municipalities to do so. This ordinance will remove the kill-in-action provision that we previously had. Secondly, there is now included a 12-year vesting program which conforms with Act 600. That's the other change in the plan. Other than that, to my knowledge, there are no other changes in the pension plan, unless they would be minor housekeeping ones. But I don't think there are. So the motion or the ordinance has been duly advertised. We are required to do this, and I would ask the council to make the appropriate motion, which would be to enact ordinance outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Mr. Jim, Angela, second?
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Forish, all in favor? Any more questions?
Madam Mayor, I just have one question. Is our regular personnel that are union, when are they vested? After three years or five years?
Twelve. They asked me, and everybody else that's in PMRS?
Twelve years.
Twelve.
And isn't there, okay, so there aren't provisions in the law for five-year vesting, I believe? Are there not?
Yeah, but the police never had any before, up until, I think it was 2009. This should have been done, you know, a while.
I agree with the 12 years. I'm just wondering if it's, if we should be thinking in terms of a shorter vesting for, I think...
Those are negotiable when the contracts are up.
Are you sure? All right.
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to commend Mr. Graziani for discovering, in whatever way he did, the fact that the state is now paying the insurance policy for kill-in-action police officers. We had been paying $3,500, approximately $3,500 a year in insurance premiums. Up to this point, we were no longer required to pay those premiums, as the state has been paying them. However, the city was eligible for this as far back as 2009, and no action had been taken up until Alex has done so. So I commend him for this action, the savings, to the city.
Any other questions or discussion?
This is ordinance 2013-6. Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mr. Boldnary?
Yes.
Mr. Scopora?
Yes.
Madam Griffin?
Yes.
Thirty-six yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, in that there are two more resolutions following, which are both pension-related. The first one I will read is a resolution of the city of Latrobe relative to the procurement of professional services for the municipal pension systems sponsored by the city based on the requirements of Act 44 of 2009. Now therefore be resolved, Section 1 of the city procedures for procuring professional services for the municipal pension system will include the following. Assemble committee to oversee the request for proposed process, adopt the policy relating to potential conflicts of interest, develop a timeline for posting advertisements, submission period, deadline interviews, decision and notifications, draft an application form, advertisement and disclosure form, advertise the availability of a contract including application and required disclosure forms, collective review proposals to select the most qualified person, interview candidates, complete disclosure forms regarding municipal pension system officers, employees, to identify potential conflicts of interest, make all applications and disclosure forms public, summarize the relevant factors that result in the award of the contract. Within 10 days of awarding the contract, transmit the original application form, a summary of the basis for the award and required disclosure form to all necessary applicants. If amending the contract to increase the cost by more than 10%, post the increase in written justification for the increase on the municipal pension system's website. Maintain updated annual disclosure and contract orders, or disclosures for contract orders. Amend the procedures as may be required by the auditor general. And the motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Forish, second?
Second, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Boldnary, any questions or discussion?
I have a question. Who do we currently contract for this service? Anyone?
Who do we, who do we have contracted at the moment? I believe it's Woffenhoff.
And this resolution does what?
It establishes procedures, if we seek to change to some new vendor of services, or any new or additional vendor of services relative to the pension plan. These would be the procedures we would be required to follow. And they're required by Act 44.
Thank you, Madam.
Any other questions or discussion?
This is Resolution 2013-47. Mr. Boldnary?
Yes.
Mr. Scopora?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Jim, Angela?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Madam Griffin?
Yes.
Thirty-six yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next resolution actually goes hand-in-hand with the one that you just passed. And the title of this resolution is adoption of a policy relating to potential conflicts of interest in the review of a proposal or the negotiation of a contract for the city of Latrobe Pension Systems. Now therefore be resolved, Section 1, that the council of the city of Latrobe hereby adopts the following policy relating to potential conflicts of interest in the review of a proposal or the negotiation of a contract for the city of Latrobe Pension Systems. That policy is attached as Exhibit A. Section 2 says that all other resolutions inconsistent herewith are hereby repealed. Section 3 authorizes the mayor, city manager, city secretary, or any other proper city officer to execute any and all documents and take any and all action necessary to carry into effect this resolution. The motion would be to adopt the resolutions outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Scopora, second?
I second, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Forish, any questions or discussion?
Madam Mayor, this is a question concerning the pension plan. I think that the council voted to get out of bonds and into stock on the investments. How has that fared? The movement from stock, I think you went in, or we went from bonds to stock. Has our portfolio increased or decreased since we did that?
As you know, the plan is then subject more to the market because of that shift. And I want to say the most recent lead that we've seen has some decrease in it, again, based on market fluctuations. But I think over the last year or so, not just the last quarter, the last year or so, the market has done pretty well.
So since we switched, the pension plan has lost money?
I think the last quarter, if I recall, I don't have the figures before me, but again, on some of our market investments, I would say that's correct. Don't poke me on it, if you will. I can certainly provide for you tomorrow morning the exact figures.
I won't eat it that quick, believe me. But is this a new policy? Will that affect how we choose the investments that are...
Well, it relates to the person who's assisting us with that. You can see on Exhibit A, it mentions, for example, past employees, you know, people who have an interest in the pension plan themselves wouldn't be able to work on those kinds of decisions.
I see. All right, thank you.
Because, you know, as you can imagine, whether a young pensioner or a person who's older into the system, he'd have a different viewpoint about it, invest money.
Problems?
Potential.
Any other questions or discussion?
This is Resolution 2013-48. Mr. Scopora?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mr. Jim, Angela?
Yes.
Mr. Boldnary?
Yes.
Madam Griffin?
Yes.
Thirty-six yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
The next item under Administration and Finance is also a resolution. It is entitled approving application for Pennsylvania in development of community and economic development. And whereas the city desires to undertake a project under the Early Intervention Program for the acquisition of software updates for government administration and the development of a business plan for the Latrobe Transfer Station, now therefore be it resolved, Section 1. The council of the city of Latrobe authorizes the city manager to make application for a grant on its behalf. The council of the city of Latrobe hereby allocates as its participating share of the project resources not to exceed the amount of $61,500. Section 3, that any other, and all other resolutions inconsistent herewith be in the same or hereby repealed. Section 4 authorizes mayor, city manager, city secretary, and any other proper city officer to execute any and all documents and take any and all action necessary to carry into effect this resolution. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined.
May I have a motion?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Boldnary, second? May I have a second? May I have a second?
Having requested a second for three times, Madam Mayor, and then given, the motion would fail.
Madam Mayor, before we move on, I'd like to put this motion forth once again. I don't understand the council's reluctance to second this motion. We definitely need, and all it is is for an application for a grant to purchase software, which we desperately need, and a business plan for the transfer station, which we've kicked around for 34 years now. And we've decided, after we rejected the last contract, that we have to come up with a plan with regard to what we're doing with the transfer station. And the only way to go about this is to first come up with a business plan.
I agree. And we have a business manager, and we have a public works director, Ms. Buck, and a few other professionals that I think could come up with a business plan for the transfer station with the help of some local support from possibly St. Vincent College to come up, that wouldn't cost any of the... It's a half-matching grant, so it's about $62,000 for that to come up with, for this. And as far as the software upgrades, I'm not so sure that everything's desperately needed there. I think some of our software is doing the job that it needs to do for the price we pay. That's my opinion.
All right, go ahead, Mike.
Well, nonetheless, it's an application for a grant, it's simply that. And as far as the 50-50 match goes, that's the maximum we would have to match. We would probably get, there's a good chance that we would get hardship status, where the state would pick up the bulk of the cost. But we have to do something. We can't just sit here on our hands and do nothing. And yes, we do have a business manager and a public works director, but I'm not so sure that their area of expertise is developing a business plan for that transfer station. We need to turn to someone outside the city. If we do it with the use of this money, or if we go to St. Vincent College, as you suggested, Mike, and use the volunteers from school, whatever it is, we need to do this. All we're doing is applying for the grant. What harm is there in applying for this grant?
I have another question. If we apply for the grant, do we have, will we be able to have another vote to turn it down? down if we don't want to match that money?
Yes. We don't have to accept the money. It's yes, but let me, let me say this. I think, and maybe Mr. Graziani can confirm this, if you're applying for a grant and it's given to us, and then we say, well, gee, thanks, but no thanks, that's not going to bode too well for us.
I thought so.
The next step, the next time, next time we're applying for grant. I don't know. I mean, that's just my guess. They don't like it when people refuse money that they're willing to give.
I think we should go with the option of St. Vincent Score Program.
Madam Mayor, I agree with that. I think we should at least give that a try. We already know certain factors concerning the transfer station. And as a matter of fact, the last bid that was, one of the contractors, we didn't award the contractor, but one of the contractors said that it took $67 a ton to carry the and dispose of the trash from the transfer station. And I would think the contractor, you know, billion dollar industry, would have a pretty good hand on, on actual costs. So I think that's a starting point. And that's why we have the St. Vincent Development Center. As far as the software is concerned, I think Ms. Buck, at one point, using Quicken, prepared a very good substantial cost allocation system among the six departments. And I think maybe if you just beefed that up a little bit, you know, at probably at very little cost, I think you'd have an answer to a good cost accounting system which would help the city and help the council make decisions. And that's why I'm not supporting it at this time.
I think we should take, I think we should take advantage of the St. Vincent College and their program.
That's only one facet of this grant application. We need the software. Richard, you, of all people, have been yipping and moaning for years, as long as I've been on council, that you're not able to look at our finances and determine what is what. Our, the system we use is archaic, it's outdated, it's outmoded, and it needs, it sorely needs replaced.
This grant wouldn't replace those systems, it would just recommend replacements. And there's a few software companies right here in town that could help us with that. Am I correct? The grant wouldn't purchase the software?
The grant does provide funds for this, for software purchases, yes. But again, I think, you know, as I replied earlier in an email question, we can make it work. I mean, you know, there are opportunities, but again, whether it's St. Vincent, the Service Corps of Retired Executives on the business plan side, and on the software side, this is, at the end of the day, there may be a way to get what we all want and save some money at the end.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item on the agenda is also a resolution, and I will read the title, authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Nationwide Payment Solutions LLC for customized electronic payment processing. Basically, it reads, now therefore be resolved, the Council of the City of Latrobe approves entering into a contract with Nationwide Payment Solutions LLC to provide the municipal payment solution for payments of varying types in nature to the city. And Section 2, the city manager shall determine which payments shall be subject to the municipal solution. And Section 3 authorizes the mayor, city manager, city secretary, and other proper officers to execute any and all documents and take any and all action necessary to carry into effect this resolution. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined.
May I have a motion?
So move, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Scapora, second, please.
I'll second, Madam.
Mr. Jivinangelo, any questions or discussion? Question? This is Resolution 201349. Mr. Forrester?
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger?
Yes.
Mr. Scapora?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Jivinangelo?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
That is six yes. Motion, Carrie, thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item is again a resolution. Its title is authorizing the disposition of public records set forth on the attached schedule for disposition of the records of the office or department of the City of Latrobe. Now therefore be resolved, the Council of the City of Latrobe, in accordance with the municipal records manual, hereby authorizes the disposition of the public municipal records set forth in Schedule A attached hereto. And Section 2, the city manager, city secretary, and any other proper city officer are authorized and directed to carry out the disposition of the public municipal records set forth on Schedule A and to carry into effect this resolution. Resolving council this date, the motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion?
So move.
Mr. Scapora, may I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
I have a question.
Any questions?
No question. Mr. Kelly, is there any way that we could make this a five-year or 10-year resolution? So that we could do this once every five years or once every 10 years, instead of once every year to dispose of the same records each year?
I don't know that we can, Mr. Scapora, because I don't know that the Schedule A will always be the same year in, year out. Some years it may be tax records, other years it may not be tax records, it might be records, general records of the municipality. Am I correct, Ms. Buck, that the records will change from year to year?
Yes, this could be for, for different departments. It would be nice to do that, except for you'd have to keep track of, like, say every seven years, which ones you put, you know, in storage. But you could have some kind of schedule to do it that way and just say that you're going to dispose of the records.
It always meant the schedule we had, that we would do it once every five years or something.
Right. You could say that you're going to dispose of whatever records from seven years ago, because that's what the retention period is, is seven years.
I'm willing to discuss it with Ms. Buck and Mr. Graziani, but the law clearly says we have to authorize it. So.
I agree.
Once a year to have a resolution with an attachment?
Yeah. The authority, Madam Mayor, the authority, Latrobe Municipal Authority has to do the same thing every year. The only, there is a continuing resolution to allow the destruction of records. And this every year thing doesn't even apply to historical records or records of a special nature, as I understand. To that, you have to get permission before you could even offer the resolution for destruction. So I do think that you have to look at it every year.
Do we scan these records and keep them on them? Some type of electronic media would destroy it or not? Do we have them electronically or not?
The, you see, with historical, society came in at one point and scanned everything that they wanted to keep on record in the state files. I know Ann Powell in the code office was in charge of having them come in here and do that. That was some years ago. And from what I understand, certain records they consider of, you know, worth to keep, the rest of them are just things like what we're destroying every seven years, which most businesses, that's all they do with them. Anything of historical nature is what they want. Other than that, in our archive room, we do keep everything that is retained permanently in there. There's minutes from 1854 that are still in our archive room.
But none of these records are kept electronically, we have an electronic version of what we're destroying here.
We don't, we don't do it ourselves, no. Now, there's records that are in the computers that are kept, you know, for a period of time, but that's generally three years we keep that. The paper records are kept for, on the most part, seven. Now, there's some records that are kept for 12, some of the police records are kept for 75 years, and there are some things that are kept permanently. But there's a long list of them, and every department has different retention periods.
Have we ever run into an issue where we needed to reference something that was eight years old and we've already destroyed because of the loss of seven years, we could get rid of it, and we didn't have an electronic copy of it?
Yes. I might have been asked for something that was that current but not historical, and right, we would not have kept a record of it. We're not required to.
I can tell you, Mr. Scapora, just in different communities, roadways, you'd be surprised how information about when a roadway was laid out in the 1850s, how that can have a bearing on somebody's property rights. But those things usually are destroyed after a period of time.
I think, Mike, what you're suggesting, which is something I will look into, is, again, systematically scanning, whether it's stored onsite or, if you will, in the cloud in some server. You know, it's getting more feasible to do that. Whereas five years, six years ago, it might not have been. But there's no reason why today, for how little file space these things take up, we couldn't begin to prioritize and say which ones should be scanned and kept on an early basis and which ones, you know, would still fit to the schedule and not need to be scanned.
We're just trying to find if we did it, maybe it's something to think about for the future.
I will.
Any other questions or discussion? Park? This is Resolution 201350. Mr. Jivinangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Forrester?
Yes.
Mr. Scapora?
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
That is six yes. Motion, Carrie, thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item is the item number seven, which I requested amended to the agenda. It is a resolution, its entitled, Approving WPPSEF Energy Audit Grant Agreement with Southern Alagene's Planning and Development Commission. Whereas a comprehensive, the City of Latrobe has obtained a comprehensive energy audit of its municipal building located 901 Jefferson Street. And whereas the city seeks from the Southern Alagene's Planning and Development Commission a grant for reimbursement for a significant portion of the cost of the audit in an amount not to exceed $5,000, now therefore be resolved, Section 1, council of the City of Latrobe hereby approves and authorizes entering into a West Penn Power Sustainable Energy Fund Audit and Grant Agreement between Southern Alagene's Planning and Development Commission Grantee and the City of Latrobe Subgrante in the form attached as Exhibit A in an amount not to exceed $5,000. And said grant shall be based upon the successful acquisition of the Comprehensive Energy Audit. And Section 3 authorizes the mayor, city manager, and secretary, and any other proper city officer to take any and all action and execute any and all documents necessary. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion?
So move, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Baldinger, second?
I'll second.
Mr. Scapora, any questions or discussion?
This, I have a question. The audit has already been completed, right? And so we're, we're applying for money to help offset the cost of the audit.
The audit costs $6,000, and this will reimburse us for $5,000 of that $6,000.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? This is Resolution 201351. Mr. Jivinangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Forrester?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger?
Yes.
Mr. Scapora?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
That is six yes. Motion, Carrie, thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item appears under the Public Works Department, and it is a resolution, its entitled, Second Amendment to the Transfer Station Rates. Whereas by ordinance 1998-10, which provides that changes or amendments to the rules, regulations, and rates of sanitation collection shall be made by council, and whereas on August 3, in August of 2013, council amended certain rates charged for transfer station services, now therefore be resolved, Section 1, the scheduled fees and charges for transfer station services being the same as hereby amended, as set forth on Exhibit A attached hereto, said rates shall remain in force and effective until such time as they may be amended or changed by council. Section 2, the mayor, city secretary, city manager, and any other proper city officer are authorized to take any and all action to carry into effect the changes authorized by this resolution. Section 3, all other resolutions inconsistent herewith are hereby repealed. Section 4, according to the provisions of ordinance 1998-10, notice of this change in regulations and all rates shall be advertised for two consecutive weeks in a newspaper of general circulation, and the within resolution rate change shall become effective 30 days from the date of the last publication unless a writ of appeal or protest is filed with the city secretary within that 30-day period. If any appeal is filed, then the change shall be proposed by ordinance to be considered by council at the next possible meeting. Resolving council this date, the motion would be to adopt the resolutions outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion, please?
So move, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Scapora, second?
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Baldinger, any questions or discussion? Questions, discussion? Questions? This is Resolution 201352. Mr. Baldinger?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Scapora?
Yes.
Mr. Forrester?
Yes.
Mr. Jivinangelo?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
That is six yes. Motion, Carrie, thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item also appears under the Public Works Department. It is a resolution, and it means acceptance of bid for municipal waste disposal contract. Now therefore be resolved, Section 1, that the bid submitted by Green Ridge Waste Services LLC doing business is allied waste services of Scottsdale Sides Republic Services for the collection, transportation, and disposal of municipal waste and recyclables, according to the bid specifications of the City of Latrobe, at the unit prices set forth in said bid for five consecutive 12-month cycles, said cycles to begin on the first day of February 2014 and terminate on the 31st day of January in 2019, being the same as hereby accepted. Section 2, that a contract entitled Municipal Waste Disposal Service Contract, which said contracts shall be in form and content as substantially set forth on Exhibit A attached hereto, the final draft of which shall be satisfactory to the officer of the solicitor of the city, being the same as hereby awarded to Green Ridge Waste Services LLC with other names for the collection, transportation, and disposal of municipal waste and recyclables according to the specifications of the city, which bid specifications are incorporated in and made a part of the contract, at the unit prices set forth in said bid for five consecutive 12-month cycles. Section 3, the mayor, city manager, and city secretary of the City of Latrobe and/or any other proper officer of the City of Latrobe, part of vice and consent of the officer of the solicitor for the City of Latrobe, after review of the former content of the final draft of the Municipal Waste Disposal Service Contract being the same, are hereby authorized and directed to sign the above referred to contract, together with any other necessary documents required to carry into effect this resolution. I am advised by the secretary that my dates are not quite accurate. It would appear that it would be the first day of January 2014, and the ending date would be December 31, 2018. That would be the five-year period. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion, please?
So move, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Scapora, second?
Second, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Baldinger, any questions or discussion?
Madam Mayor, I have a few questions. First of all, who executed the bid specification that we're adopting? Who signed it? I just want to know what the contractor's name was.
Mr. Smith's name, you mean, as far as the David Smith?
No, 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 the name of the company.
Green Ridge Waste Services LLC, DVA, allied waste services of Scottsdale Republic Services.
All of that?
I'm just reading from the cover.
Well, they have a signature page.
Correct. And again, Green Ridge Waste Services is some of that, you know, the shorter version.
I see. I just noticed it was an LLC, a limited liability company. And I just wondered if that was the one that bid, because I understood that the one that bid, I think, claimed, what, billions of dollars of assets? And they, and I guess I'm just trying to figure that out. Can, could the solicitor look at that, please?
Look at what?
The successful bidder was, how it was signed, the call.
How it was signed, the contract?
Well, the contract has not yet been prepared, so nobody signed anything.
There was something in the specifications that they signed by somebody.
The bid bond is stated as Green Ridge Waste Services LLC, which is the principal.
Is it also Republican, too? Commander, if I want to...
No. On the bid bond itself, just on that one document, it says Green Ridge Waste Services LLC, principal, and then it's signed by Michelle Paxson. Okay? On the front...
And the lead sheet says what?
Green Ridge Waste Services LLC, Doing Business AS, which would give a fictitious name, Allied Waste Services of Scottsdale slash Republic Services. So the indication is it's an LLC with a fictitious name, Doing Business AS.
Any other questions or discussion?
Madam Mayor, I have, I don't want to drag this on. There were two things that I didn't like about the contract, you know, even though I'll probably vote for it. But the one is that in the contract for the residents, they have, they only have two choices. They either do bags for a 95-gallon disposable container, and I don't know whether there's 95-gallon ones right there. And I personally think that the residents should have a choice of whether they use for the trash a 95-gallon, or 65-gallon, or 40-gallon, or the bags. But, you know, because some people may not want to use bags but don't want to use the 95, and I think there should have been a choice there. My only other comment is that in the contract, the specifications, it allows the, it doesn't provide for new bins, like, there's about 435 commercial bins throughout the city. If you've seen them, they're rusty, they're out of shape, they have numerous names on them, the handles are rusty, the bins don't close. And I just wondered why we didn't put in the bidding specifications that those had to be replaced, or they happened to be replaced with new ones. Because we do everything else. For instance, the bike racks, the new garbage containers that we purchased, they're engineered, they're architecturally engineered items, and yet we're allowing the hauler, or the specification didn't require the hauler to put in new bins and so forth for the commercial customers. That's my second point. The third is, I do not recall that the city authorized the bid, no, at a regular meeting. It's my understanding that we always voted to authorize a bidding for any contract, and I don't recall that. Now, maybe that can be fixed somehow. I'll ask the solicitor to perhaps comment on that. And Mrs. Buck, do you recall if there was authority given to advertise that bid?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry if there was what?
Authority given to advertise the bid for the garbage contract.
It's happened so many times, I have lost track.
If, Mr. Jim, if you feel certain that that may not have happened, my suggestion would be we make a motion to ratify the actions of the city manager. Simple as that. And advertise him for the bid.
I can check and see. I can look back through the minutes and see if there was a motion made.
You can?
Yeah. All right. It's not right now, but tomorrow. Is that soon enough?
It's soon enough for me, but is it illegal advertisements if you don't have authority to advertise?
You know, Mr. Jim, I'd have to go back and honestly look to see what was said at what council meetings, but I know that there was, it's subsequent authority given to the city manager to advertise. Now, whether anything was given for subsequent authority, I don't know. But if there is a concern, you clean it up right away.
Specifically, we rejected all bids at the July meeting and authorized me to go forward.
In the July meeting, Alex, we have rejected all the bids and we authorized him to replace off the bids. That was in the July meeting. If I can get it on my card and dig it out, I will, but I, because I've looked it up tonight before again. I have every piece of paper I have got from the day I was on council. I'll someday review.
I have them all. I'm just not going to go run downstairs and try to think to find it.
You believe Mr. Forish, he was authorized?
Yes, it was in the July, because I didn't make the August, but it was in the July one. We rejected all bids and authorized Alex to advertise the bid.
Yeah, it was a point, yeah.
Those are the items we discussed that evening. Now, we can put the motions and things like that.
I just looked it up this week, Alex.
Having heard Mr. Forish, and with the assurances of the manager that he had the authority to advertise, then I have no other questions.
Anybody else have any questions or discussion?
This is Resolution 201353. Mr. Scapora?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Baldneri?
Yes.
Mr. Jivenangelo?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
That is six yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I would, I'd like to make a motion to approve non-pro-tomp the advertisement of the bids.
If, that means not for then, not for then. So what Mr. Jim is saying is, to eliminate any question, which I don't doubt what Mr. Forish has told me, but to eliminate any question, council can vote right now and say, we authorize now for when it would have occurred prior to the submission of the bidding, we authorize the manager to do that. Then there's no issue.
You need my...
He already made the motion. We need a second.
I'll second.
Madam Mayor, this is just a motion, it's not a resolution, so you don't need to walk on.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
There's no longer issue.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item comes up under the Police Department, and it is a resolution to authorize a handicap parking space. The resolution reads, now therefore be resolved, that a parking space located on the southern side of Washington Street, adjacent to property of John Auman, A-U-M-A-N, being the same as hereby designated as a handicap disabled veteran van accessible parking space, should the applicant no longer reside at the premises located at 121 Washington Street. Latrobe A, then in that event, the handicap disabled veteran van accessible parking space designation shall cease and terminate on the last date of occupancy. Section two authorizes the appropriate city officers to take all steps necessary to place all proper signs and carry into effect this resolution resolved in council this date. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Jivenangelo, second?
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Forish, any questions or discussion?
This is Resolution 201354. Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Jivenangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mr. Scapora?
Yes.
Mr. Baldneri?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Six yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
I have no further ideas, Madam Mayor.
Anything on our unfinished business?
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to address Chief Brazili with regard to the state that he made earlier regarding the arson investigation. I'm assuming, chief, that the state police, and we can say this assured, most assuredly, that they have concluded their arson investigation, yes?
Their portion is done.
Yeah, their investigation is complete. And I'm assuming that the other investigation that is going on is being undertaken by an insurance company. That's my assumption.
I'm not going to divulge that information to you or anybody else.
Okay, thank you.
Just another agency.
Any other, any unfinished business? New business? Anything on the new business? Okay, Alex, city manager?
My manager's report is submitted to council. I have cops available, and it is available online as well.
All right, my report, I just, I think we talked about the Banan Split. Just thank everybody for all the support for the Banan Split Festival we have. It seemed to go up pretty well, so thanks, everybody. Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Madam.
Mr. Scapora, second?
Second, Madam.
Mr. Baldneri, all in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Motion carried.
It's early for the night.